The board to review the district enrollment and attendance area committee proposals. I'll turn the time over to A.J. Watson, Sue Pettit, and Jonathan Bowles to present the committee's proposals. So we'll just start with elementary.
Good afternoon, board members. I will just be a short timer up here, so I will stand and then turn it over to A.J. and his committee there. In your packet, there's a document, addendum slash educational funding comparison. It was updated yesterday with some numbers that we had received. I wanted to draw that to your attention. And really, this is why we've started down this path. If you've got that pulled up, what we did is we actually received the actual number of units that we will be funded on this first reporting period. And it is lower than what I'd initially said. And so does everybody have that in front of them? That's just critical there.
Can we do that again?
It's the addendum. It's the educational funding comparison there. Again...
The thirteen versus seventeen. That's the one we're looking at.
Correct. It's the additional seventeen. So again, you'll see that we budgeted using five hundred and sixty-five. That's where we ended last year. And so that's what was budgeted there. The actual came back at, we're now at five hundred and forty-eight units. Again, you can compare that unit as a classroom. And so a couple of things that, again, that's where we've started here. And so for, from last year to this year, you'll see it's a reduction of almost, you know, four point seven million dollars. And so again, it was budgeted, we had a balanced budget in June when that five hundred and sixty-five units were based on. And now that we have our revenue side, we'll start working to present a balanced budget for you, adjusted budget, in March. And that's what we will go on. But that's kind of why we're started through this process is just our dip in enrollment resulted in less average daily attendance, which results in fewer support units, which obviously reduces our staffing. And so the number there that you'll see is that basically it's two point six, almost two point seven million dollars that we will have to adjust from what I budgeted in June to what is actually has happened. And so that's what has put us in on this path of enrollment boundaries and our attendance zones.
So just to clarify, at the five sixty-five, you were thinking two million and forty-seven and change. But at five forty-eight, now we're at two point six, or you're having to add those together?
Yeah, we'll have to add those. Correct. So, and we went back and forth on how to present that. But correct, if, last year we were paid at five hundred and seventy-eight, which is our protected balance. And what that means is we could not go lower than three percent of our ADA for the prior year. But again, you're not protected on the protected amount. You're protected on the actual amount. And so even though we did lose some, it was less than three percent, or excuse me, it was not more than three percent. And so that's where we're at, that actual five hundred and forty-eight. So that's where we're down, the thirty units. And so that's the task that we've been started in, is looking at these position reduction of at least twenty-plus. And again, do that most through, you know, do our very best to, you know, do that through attrition and so forth. But it is a very tall, daunting, challenging task, for sure.
When did you just get these, the actual number?
So it actually came through the break. It was like the twenty-second. So by the time, correct, correct. So they, because they're using the numbers that we report in IC. But also, there were some districts in the state that were more than three percent, so they were protected. And so that was the final piece of the information that came out of how much it cost us, because that's self-funded among all the school districts. And it cost us, it cost us a unit and a half, one point five units. So we were actually closer to five fifty, but then the cost was taken off of that, so that's how we landed at the five forty-eight.
So the number that we're talking about right now for this year is two million, six hundred and seventy-seven, like you said?
That's the difference from budget to actual. So the full amount from last year to this year is the combination of both of those. So it's closer to four point seven million.
Okay, those two numbers.
In reduction of revenues. And so now it's our task. And before, we budgeted, you know, to cover that first two million. It's that, the two point six million is that that's what we'll work on. Do our very best to cover this year. Obviously, it's going to dip into our savings and our carryforward amount.
Because you already accounted for the previous two million, correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
So the one that is not yet accounted for is that very last number in the...
Two point six seven.
Yeah, the two point six seven. And that's, as a reminder, you know, salaries and benefits equate to but close eighty-five, eighty-six to eighty-eight percent of our budget. But those are all under contract, right? And so that's what, when I say we have to kind of realign about twenty positions, that's for next year. So we don't continue the red into next year. Again, we're just trying to balance as our revenues go down, we have to decrease our expenditures as well.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry to start that with a tough news there, but that's, I wanted to show that updated information with you.
What, just one quick question about on average, I mean, I know it's hard to gauge. Well, I guess you could be a little more particular with how much happens with attrition with retirement, because you know who's somewhat coming close. I mean, is this, what is our average per year, would you say?
We know last year we were able to cover fourteen.
Yeah, you were able to cover...
We were able to cover fourteen and still have trouble. You know, it depends. It's kind of double. We have the highest retention rate in the state.
Right.
And so I think that that speaks volumes. So we're about twenty-seven.
Okay.
Right around there. But you've got to keep in mind that that's high school, middle school, elementary. So, you know, and I say this just as a whole, as a system issue, that, you know, certifications and those kinds of things that the public don't look at, right? As we move forward.
Do you want to go here?
Yeah, sure.
One question also on this same page. Oh, I'm sorry, after you're done.
Oh, okay. And so, you know, it totally depends. And sometimes that twenty-seven, twenty-nine may include pupil personnel, or it may include those kinds of things. And so it just kind of depends. We start getting, usually around February, I start to get a few resignations. And then I send out, you know, just a letter a couple of times here over the next couple of months. And then those kind of start coming in. And what we'll do is we'll just have a freeze on, you know, as far as opening those positions until we have final numbers and we have a final decision that, you know, you as a board make is where we're headed.
And Jonathan, that one number at the bottom says we received four point two million in the one time.
Yes.
So that covered which thing? Did that cover the current deficit for now, but not, obviously not going forward?
Correct. That was in one-time dollars. We received that in June, so that was in last fiscal year. So that did...
That covered the first two million?
That covered some of the, as you noticed, we were down twenty-one units and we cut, even though it's fairly close to a one-to-one for a unit to a position or a certified position. And so that, the four point two helped offset that first, that three point three million.
The first.
The leftover obviously will be used to help this year to, you know, to get us until we can make some permanent changes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, the one thing I'm not seeing, that I guess, you know, we talk about maps and we're talking about attendance and we're talking about, but I haven't seen any dollars associated with any of these. And maybe that's coming in our discussion today, but I mean, what are we...
Explain a little bit more.
Well, you know, I mean, if we're talking about closing a school or not closing a school versus just spreading, I mean, that's one thing I haven't really seen. What are the financial advantages of closing one school over the other? Is that even, doesn't that have to play into kind of all of it? Am I asking?
No, no, you're not asking.
Yeah, staffing is the bigger number. So anyway, you start and then I'll...
Yeah, so from the resources side of things, the staffing piece is the largest amount for a school. I mean, obviously they have larger projects and other things, but that staffing piece. And as we're talking about the options, one of which we will present today, with the two schools, Washington and Tendoy, the staffing sizes are very similar in terms of the number of teachers, FTEs. They would be very similar as far as staffing sizes and costs. We haven't put a number to that, but it is something we could, you know, depending on where we go after today's meeting and receiving public input, we could definitely put a number to that. It would also depend on how we reallocate that staff as well, right?
Right, that's one of the things we've talked about.
Is it something where we're going to reduce, which, looking at this, we may very well be looking at having to reduce maybe even more than we initially thought. And so how do we redistribute or through attrition? Do we, you know, are there twelve positions that we are no longer going to fill that are FT, you know, elementary FTE positions that would help with this current situation?
That would be throughout the all, though, elementary through high school, correct?
Um...
Twenty positions, or are you...
Yes. We haven't, we haven't talked about that staffing piece yet, but we know it will be a large discussion, but this will... Correct. It will not just be elementary. It would be elementary and secondary that would be impacted. Obviously, what we're seeing the biggest impact right now is elementary. So percentage-wise, it may be a little heavier in the elementary than secondary, but it would definitely have an impact overall.
One thing I didn't realize, but in the journal article brought my attention to it, is in Washington, Washington is bigger. And so as far as like the costs, like, you know, the Tendoy is two hundred and twenty-one, no. The capacity is three hundred and sixty-four versus four hundred and seventy-six.
There are more classes.
Washington has that much bigger. I did not realize that till I was reading that article.
Yes.
And I saw that on your, this that you had provided in our agenda.
Correct.
Just real quick on facilities. So again, you have operational dollars and you have maintenance dollars. Operational dollars for Washington and Tendoy are less than a certified teacher for the entire year. So that's where we're focusing on kind of the biggest levers there, if we can call them. But then you also have maintenance dollars, and that's where part of the, where I do support the recommendation of the committee, because the maintenance dollars to extend the life of those buildings is quite substantial, specifically in Washington. And so, but the operational dollars, yes, there are some savings there, but it is less than a, than significantly less than even one certified.
So in regards to that, you're saying right now there are structural problems in the foundation of Washington for about one point two million that need to be taken care of immediately, or?
So yes, depending on what the board decides, if we're going to be using Washington for the, you know, longer than, I'd probably say three to five years, then yes, there will be some additional, even a lot more dollars that will need to be spent in Washington to maintain that, the useful life of that.
Oh, I never, I didn't see where it said the foundation. I only saw the roof and some like HVAC and some other things. But it is also the foundation as well?
It, when, a building of that age, yes, we would go from, we'd have to go from top to bottom and look at some of those foundational issues as well.
But those were the red line items in the last information you presented. And so I've got a question too about the totals here. You say two point seven million approximately. How did the eight million figure come up?
And so that's just, that's just the total from those, the three numbers, the three point three. Yeah, the three point three, the two, and the two point six. And that was just, again, comparison from this actual to our prior, you know, those several years that we were right at five hundred and ninety-nine. And those are all based on the number of our units that we are declining times the amount of a unit that's shown in the bottom, that hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five oh eight.
So we're currently at a deficit of eight million then?
Again, I wouldn't say deficit, because again, we were able to balance our expenditures with our declining revenue, right? And so that's, as long as we're, I use the word balanced, balanced budget. But yes, if we are at five hundred, five ninety-nine this year, we would be, we'd have eight million dollars more in revenue.
And does that take into account the four point two million one-time grant we got, or?
So, no, it, no, it does not. And that's why we have that asterisk. And that's kind of what was used to kind of offset, you know, offset that, the difference there.
So it covered it by...
So yes, so it did cover that. That is correct.
So the main takeaway is going forward, we're looking at two point seven billion dollars extra per year to keep...
That is correct. We're trying to be proactive. Like I say, we're still on firm, stable foundation right now. But there is, we need to be proactive in aligning our enrollment and our staffing levels. And that's what, that's basically what the committee is asking for some help in that regard in the way of facilities.
Yeah, thank you.
I wonder, I don't know, do you want me to ask you this now? There was, there were some numbers in the journal that I just wanted to clarify. I can ask you later.
If you wouldn't mind, and in that way, that way I can see and answer those.
In kind of the structural...
Sure.
Cost. But yeah, I can talk to you about it after.
If that works that way, I'll be more prepared.
Sure.
For you to answer your question.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. Appreciate your time today. I have a couple of committee members here you probably recognized from the last time we presented. Tara Daly, I'm a teacher at Wilcox Elementary, and Lauren Dalton, a parent on the committee here to represent and ask questions and provide any additional input that you may be interested in. I just wanted to first review some of the information. The committee wanted me to make sure that we talked about what their purpose was as a committee, just to give you a good reminder of what they were tasked to do. Number one was to address the decline in district ride enrollment, which I think we've all made, been made very clear as to what that looks like and the funding associated with that. To maximize the use of district resources, and that includes staffing as far as the resources. And then develop recommendations and options to provide the school board for elementary enrollment areas. So just as a reminder of what they were tasked to do, because they've been asked a lot of different questions and other things. And we've reminded them, hey, remember what your purpose is, what we've been tasked to do. And then depending on decisions that will be made, you know, there could be additional things to look at or consider or decisions by other groups or committees or in the school board moving forward. I wanted to review, if you'll pull up the recommendation proposal for the elementary enrollment changes. I'll just quickly review that information and go over a few of your handouts as well and some of the data. And then I'll turn it over to see if the committee members have any additional input they would like to provide. And then also give you the opportunity to ask any additional questions or follow-up based on the information that's in your packet. So in your packet, you have a recommendation. And the elementary attendance and enrollment area committee developed two additional options for the school board to consider. Just as a reminder, the first proposal, proposal number one, presented in November, was to close Washington Elementary and then change enrollment areas at all elementary schools to equalize our capacity, balance enrollments, improve access to resources, and optimize operational efficiency. And we also considered plan for future growth. We know we have a declining enrollment, but there's also some areas that seem to be growing while other areas are not. And so that was part of the process as well. After we presented in November, the board wanted us to take a look at two additional options. One, closing Tendoy Elementary. And two, if we just rebalanced enrollment areas with no school closure areas and what that would look like. So over the last three or four weeks that we were able to meet, we worked on those two options. Option number two, closing Tendoy Elementary. You'll see that you have a map in there for what that would look like if we were to close Tendoy Elementary. And just kind of, I'll give you a quick summary of the decision of the committee. As we looked at it, the numbers between Washington, Green Acres, and Tendoy are very similar in terms of their overall size. And so as the committee looked at it, the decision was made, if Tendoy were to close, that those students would just be redistributed between Green Acres and Washington. And the other enrollment areas that were changed with Washington would stay as those changes were made as well. So the only changes to that proposal involved Green Acres and Washington Elementary. Just absorbing their boundaries were changed a little bit, because the numbers were still about the same. And then all other changes for the other schools were made the same. So you'll see that as you look at the information. Does that make sense in terms of how that decision was made? So it didn't matter if it was Tendoy or Washington. For the other schools, it just affected Green Acres, Tendoy, and Washington, depending on which school was... depending on which school was, was closed in those proposals. The impact for the Tendoy school closure, it balanced student enrollment numbers, maximized resources, including staffing and increased overall building efficiency, increased those capacities. That proposal impacted one thousand three hundred and thirty-three learners. The closing Washington impacted one thousand two hundred and seventy-one learners. So, so very close, a few more with the Tendoy closure, but pretty close to the, to the same number of learners. And then option number three, you also have a map of that. And then at the end, I'll kind of go through the data and see if you have any questions in regards to the numbers. But option number three is, was to rebalance the enrollment areas with no school closure. As you can see on that map. Changes were made to all of the elementary schools except for Taihe was the only one not impacted as we rebalanced enrollment areas. As you'll see when we start to look at the data, it did help with some of the numbers of those schools that had higher capacities. The problem that we ran into is due to our lower student numbers, it, it was hard. We have, still have some schools that are really low as far as capacity. And we'll see that when we look at the data. We still have schools that are fifty-seven, fifty-nine, fifty-five percent capacity. We have some that were higher. But a- as we started to break it up, there's just not enough learners for us to be able to evenly redistribute those with our current enrollment setup. So it's possible. It, it helped a little bit with our free and reduced percentages. At some schools, at some schools, they actually went up a little bit more. But it, it, it didn't really, a- as we looked at it, i- we couldn't really balance everything out and, you know, still make boundaries reasonable and as close to neighborhood schools as, as we could. So it did accomplish for the, a few of the tasks, but overall it affected six hundred and fifty-five learners. And we still have some schools that were in the fifty percents as far as capacities. So pretty low in terms of building efficiency.
On that, I noticed there were a few little jogs that just kind of added a little, took out, took a little neighborhood away from one school, put it in another. I'm just wondering if that was upsetting to a lot of people, you know, to have just their neighborhood. I'm just wondering, because there was a couple of different neighborhoods that, you know, we've read some feedback from. I'm wondering since the school, it doesn't make that school still even eighty percent full by keeping a little bit less disturbance. I'm wondering about having a little bit less disturbance and just, you know, and just a few of those little neighborhoods that were taken out. Little ones, you know, they're just, you can see there's a few little lines where like they, you know, there's just one little neighborhood taken out. Just because we're talking about the least amount of disturbance, you know, as part of all of this.
Are you talking about the one that's rebalanced, the rebalance?
All of them have that.
Or are you talking about all of the maps?
All the maps have a little bit of that, but let me, I'm mostly, if you look at the one that you just barely attached.
Is that the balance enrollment one?
The close to Tendoy one, that's the, that's the only two that are on this agenda, right? The close to, because I can look back and I can find the other ones, but the one that was for today, on today's agenda, is the close to Tendoy and the rebalancing. And they're very similar in, like you were just saying, in most of, most of the, kind of the details. But I just noticed like, if you start with Chubbuck, if you go left or right, you know, they took out, you know, there's one neighborhood they took out and then they put in a lot of Wilcox. And I just wondered, you know, can you take out, can you put less of Wilcox into Chubbuck and then kind of leave the kids that were already in Chubbuck? And then you kind of move over across. And the same with Serenka. Can you just leave those kids that were in Serenka there? And then not take them out of Gate City, you know, and then you, you kind of go down. Do you see what I mean?
I do. Do you, do you want me to address this or do you want to address? The reasoning?
To me, it's like a couple of issues, but I don't know what you think. Yeah, I just wondered like when you're talking about the, you know, upsetting.
So here, here's the problem that you run into as you start to look at some of those areas. The reason we had to, let's, let's just take Chubbuck for example, right? We can use the Chubbuck Wilcox kind of Jefferson piece. As you start to extend to cover those areas, for example, Indian Hills had to pick up some of Washington's learners. Jefferson then needed to pick up some of Indian Hills' learners. Well, in doing that, Wilcox then, so it's the domino effect, right? As soon as you impact one of those boundary areas, now you have to, there's another school that has to pick up, because otherwise they're going to be, have a much higher capacity than the other schools. So it creates that domino effect. Whereas Wilcox had to pick up some of Jefferson's and therefore Chubbuck needed to pick up some of Wilcox's area. So yes, you can go in and you can, you can set those and pull this little neighborhood out, but as we tried to balance it out, then you, you end up with capacities that some schools are back down in the fifty percent and you have other schools that are going to be up to seventy-five percent capacity.
Does not necessarily represent the actual students in that neighborhood.
When you look at a, at a, at the map, are you looking at the house and then saying, okay, this is where an elementary student lives? And then obviously you look at the economics, you look at.
So the GIS is not included.
It's also classroom size too. And like, for instance, if you take one little neighborhood, you might add a half a teacher to that school, not a full teacher to that school. So some, that's also the number game too, where you need a full, it's classroom size too. If you take this neighborhood, now this school has thirty, has thirty kids per class. And the other school only has twenty. So it's kind of, it's a lot.
And that probably fluctuates every year. Like, I mean, this won't solve anything going forward for like the next five years. To me, it just feels like we need to be looking every year. Like if we're gonna, if we're talking about twenty versus twenty-five, thirty, like that's something that, like we found with Indian Hills last year. You know, you thought we, thought you fixed it, you know, taking out a teacher or two and then realized and then more kids moved in.
Yeah, this is, this is all done using.
Programs to Indian Hills as well. Some of our special education programs to make those more consistent and uniform across the district. We put two programs in there which reduced the number of classrooms that we had available. And so, yeah, it's always a balancing redistribution, balance, redistribute, that kind of a.
And just to add to that too, the GIS software showed the house and how many learners. It did not show us how many first graders were in that, were in that neighborhood, how many fourth graders were in that neighborhood. So there is a possibility that just taking a neighborhood may, you know, underserve one grade and over, you know, impact another grade.
Because it could have been high school kids.
No, we, we knew elementary.
To just elementary.
We, we knew the elementary numbers.
Between the elementary.
Yes.
Oh, that's good.
And it was all done using the GIS. So we used all of, it was all done using numbers to come up with.
My neighborhood is getting older. And so there, there are learners around me, but they're.
Older. Right.
So I appreciate the extra effort to make these two additional scenarios. I, I don't minimize that request at all. And so thank you. And, and maybe for my fellow board members, the thing that really stuck out to me was, you know, as we've listened to the folks from Washington and some from Tendoy that talked about their community and the smaller classrooms and the, the personalized attention, you know, I couldn't help but think that when you look at just the rebalancing map, that that kind of provides that environment at all of our schools. And, and I can't help but think, you know, if I'm thinking about, you know, yes, I know we've got budget considerations and yes, I know we've got to talk about the facility issues. But if we're focused on the best learning environment and what's best for our kids, it's those smaller classrooms. It's those more. And, and I, I don't know. I don't know that I'm ready to pull the plug on a school just yet because of that, because looking at that, you know, spreading the icing a little bit further, is that what's going to be best for our kids right now instead of closing the school? I don't know. So I appreciate that data.
I guess, I guess I see that as two different things, because there is enough room in the remaining schools. If one or the other is closed, there is enough room to hire more teachers, so, and to have lower classroom sizes. It's just that there's not the money from the state to cover the lower classroom sizes over the entire district.
Well, you also have to think about if you have these two smaller schools with each of them have seventeen kids, but then you have all these other schools that have twenty-eight to thirty kids in a school.
Consistent.
Like you're attracting teachers to smaller classrooms and then other schools are having a hard time hiring teachers because you're packing those classrooms. So you still have to balance, in my mind, no matter what you do, you still have to balance that.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. And because the average.
On November, some such date, seventeenth, eighteenth, trying to remember, I just pulled it up. Is that the Washington?
Yes. And I'll get that to you as well. We didn't include in this one.
Wanted to make sure that was the one that you were referring to.
Yes.
The map that says.
Washington were to close.
Is that the one you're looking at?
It just says elementary proposed enrollment areas map.
Oh, okay. I want to look at the same one you're looking at.
There was a lot of them and that, because we broke down, you had a lot of maps on that. Agenda.
The nineteenth, that's what it was.
Oh, yeah, I see that one. It, which is kind of still the same. Thing I was wondering, you know, because I have heard, you know, such discouragement about why would just this little neighborhood, you know.
I think you're going to, to hear that no matter what neighbor, no one wants to change or move.
No.
Anyone that gets moved to a different boundary area or enrollment area is going to feel like, you know, because they're, they've been a part of that neighborhood school. I, I remember going through it when I was at Chubbuck and they moved a portion of them to, to Wilcox. No matter what the neighborhood is and they, they feel like they're a part of that school community. And so any of those neighborhoods that get changed are going to feel that way.
I did feel kind of sorry for, you know, I mean, I feel sorry for all of them. But the drive, increasing the drive by a lot, you know, versus walking distance versus, versus a quite a drive, you know, I mean, there are a lot of things that.
And, and we kind of talked about that, you know, as you look south of town, we are limited on the, on the number of schools we have south of town. And so we have a lot of them right here in the middle corridor that are within a few miles of each other. But you get out south of town and we're limited on the number of schools that we have out that direction. So yeah, drive time for some of them definitely.
Well, taking it from, I think that one was specifically talking about Jefferson versus Indian Hills. That, that specific one, but there were lots of different.
Right.
We did, we talked about that too in other communities. We're really lucky because you can get across town in twenty minutes or less. But like specifically for me, I think about the kids that go to Marsh Valley, like how far they're driving. It's not uncommon for people to drive. So we are kind of lucky. Is it inconvenient? Absolutely. I wouldn't like it, but it's not impossible.
Overall, I mean, we have a bigger, we're not rural. We have a, we have options.
And trustee clerk, just, just to kind of follow up on your comment about, you know, the smaller class size and having more teachers. I, I would say we would all agree, we would love to have smaller class size. I would say the reality of it is, just like we did this year, if we choose to, you know, rebalance or not close a school or just continue as we are right now and not make any changes, that based on what Jonathan shared with us, we will have to make reductions and it will, it will look like it did last year and we will have similar concerns and issues as we did at Indian Hills. Where we don't always have twenty-five students in a grade level to reduce. And we'll have to do our very best if we're said we have to cut, reduce twelve elementary positions. Let's go grade level by grade level and school by school to try to determine where those positions would be reduced. So it is possible and, and we can do it and we did it last year. But here, as we look at this, talks a little bit more, if we close down a school, you know, those, those positions, those twelve positions would obviously be reduced. We'd have to redistribute those based on, on need and what it would look like with the new enrollment areas.
We also kind of looked at census data for, I guess, the replacement numbers of younger kids that would be moving into elementary age as well. And a lot of those numbers were concentrated in the Chubbuck area, not in the area where we would be making most of the changes had we closed a school or, or moved boundaries. So we kept that in mind as well, is that some of the schools are not expecting as many kids to even come in to replace if we were to move boundaries as well.
I think maybe to add on to Mr. Watson's comment, when we're looking at a school, say for example, our smaller schools, Washington and Tendoy, when you have say, and I think I presented this example to you last time, but seventeen learners in each of two third grade classrooms, that's thirty-four. If we can manage twenty-eight to thirty in a third grade classroom, we are likely, if we have to reduce a position, then we'll have four of those learners that will have to overload to another school. And so now you have a teacher essentially teaching a single subject in a, in one school. And then those numbers will reasonably, I mean realistically, go up. So we won't be able to maintain those one to seventeen or one to eighteen. So that's, again, that icing can get so thin that you have none on a certain part of the Cape. That's, that's essentially where we could be headed.
And that worries me with the law. We, by law, have to provide an equal.
Well, that's our best effort all the way around.
Right. But when, when the, you know, I know that there was like, so but we like the smaller class sizes, but according to the law, everybody in our district needs to be treated the same.
Yeah. Is what we're trying to do.
Exactly.
And then when you do have students that move into a neighborhood, they're automatically overloaded. They don't even have an opportunity essentially to attend what would be their boundary school with the other learners in their neighborhood, because now they might be transported to a completely different school. So anything in relation to transfers, we lose tho- those opportunities when we spread ourselves a little too thin.
And I, and I was thinking that we always hold a few spots open for that reason. Once you hit capacity, there's that wiggle room for the move-ins.
Yes.
Specifically.
Right.
For move-ins. So that's good, that it's not quite as bad as it would be.
Then I know you've looked at it a little bit, but on there, it just lists the three different options with Washington for your data on the building capacity totals. It has the student capacity, the enrollment, based on the closure or just the rebalance, what those totals would, would be, as well as the free and reduced percentages, an average class size. You'll notice on there, I, I just want to make this, this clear, because we talked about initially with support units and knowing where we're at as far as funding and the estimates. We talked initially about, you know, potentially ten elementary reductions based on our current numbers. It may even be more than that, just based on the new information they received yesterday. But I did with the Washington closure and Tendoy closure, pull those, pull ten FTEs out of there. That's why it has down at the bottom, you'll see a minus, ten FTEs and two hundred and four. With the, with the balanced enrollment, it's still at two hundred and fourteen FTEs. And like I said, I would just go in, once we get to that point, we roll up all the students in Infinite Campus. Then I would just go, we go in school by, look at each school and each grade level and then make decisions as to those reductions and where those would take place. So I just wanted to make that clear as, as far as what you're looking at in those numbers with this, the class sizes.
And now it changes every year.
And that changes every year, yeah. Correct. And we do that every year anyway. It just may be a little more, a- as we reduce teachers, it becomes a little more difficult to, to do that. Usually we may have to make a few changes within a school. They've got a bubble group and they kind of have a teacher that may have to follow that bubble group or a couple of teachers. But as we look at reducing larger number of teachers, that becomes more and more difficult to do.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I'm still concerned about, you know, kind of if some of the boundaries could stay a little bit more similar. I, I know it's like mind boggling, but I just, I really do feel sorry for, you know, changing schools, for, for parents that have to change schools. And I know that that might not be a possibility, but I mean, some of them, some of the boundaries go so close to one school, then had to go to the other school, you know, the boundary goes. I mean, if you look at Indian Hills, for one example, but it's, that's pretty hard to, it's pretty hard for them to.
And I, I would say, and I don't want to speak for the committee, we, we've talked about this, we'll let them give their input as well. I would say that depending on the board's decision, that even as we looked at trying to balance out the enrollment areas, it may be more. uh, it may be more disruptive if a decision is not made to close a school. It it may be more disruptive um, to try to balance those out than uh, the benefit that you get from that.
Oh, I see, so when you're talking about not closing a school, either one of them.
If if a decision was made to not close a school, uh, that yes, we could rebalance it and it would help a little bit, um, but I don't know that the disruption uh, to that would be as to the benefit of the disruption. It would might be better to maintain as we are and have to look at making reductions without making bound enrollment area changes, does that make sense?
So either close one, oh, go ahead, sorry about that.
That'll probably be temporary anyway, we know only a couple of years we'd be looking at what we're doing right now.
Every year.
And maybe maybe the committee can expand on that a little bit.
Well, we did talk about that, about it being, we're really looking into the future and we talked a lot about when we first looked at the numbers, we actually could close two schools, um, if you look at the numbers, uh, because the capacities are still at seventy, less than eighty percent when you do close a school. So there's still a lot of room, but we also thought, well, if we have this influx of growth and you close two, you might want to open one, um, so.
So you did consider closing two?
We never really considered it, but we talked a lot about it because of the numbers. But it would be, we were just worried that if there was an influx of people that we wouldn't be able to handle it because there's supposed to be grow, we're not seeing the growth, but talking about the growth.
I know, and it's been at a different place than what everybody thought, too. It's entirely different, like five years ago, everybody was saying that the growth was happening in an entirely different place than when it where it did happen and like you said, it kind of didn't even happen at all.
And that the trend is actually, we're not going to have growth, if you look at the numbers. It, we probably will be back here in five to ten years talking about closing another school, if if one even does, just looking at the numbers. And that's what worried us because we're looking in the future.
Mm-hmm.
So not, just leaving it how it is or not closing one, really, we're just going to be back, that's how we felt. We're just going to be back here talking about it again.
Closing maybe three at a time instead of one.
It's a possibility.
So to for, uh, pursue a little further what you've said there, I'm looking at the average class size for the uh, three different proposals, um, whether closing the Washington, closing Tendoy or not closing any. And uh, the class size uh, really isn't adversely affected that much by closing a school.
The number of kids.
I noticed that too.
The number of kids per class, average class size.
Yeah, I noticed that too, that that.
Right, that's that's pretty much what you just said, is that, am I summarizing correctly what you were saying?
And Jonathan.
Still low, if you really look at it and it balance out from school to school.
Right, so like, for example, if you look at Washington, uh, closing Washington, you're looking at uh, uh, twenty-six point three five would be uh, the cla- average class size in Chubbuck, uh, but we are down to twenty-one, twenty-two, a lot of them, you know, are twenty-two. At twenty-six would be the highest, closing Tendoy, same thing twenty-six. So, you know, we're looking at twenty-one, twenty-two kids per class, uh, and most instances is correct.
I think a lot of that has to do with, you know, if you move, if you do close a school, you not only have uh, the children that move, it's the teachers that need a spot to go as well. So when you move a group of kids to another school, a teacher has to go hopefully with them to help spread that out.
And there and currently there is capacity for them to go. Um, I noticed on that same graph that Ray was just looking at, the average class size would now be Gate City, um, but I'm wondering, like, I see like the little jogs I'm talking about, that little jog taking that one little neighborhood. Can you just not take that one little neighborhood, just to have less disruption? Because the class sizes don't, are still the lowest in the entire district.
Well, I think the Gate City one, and I'm not saying that you couldn't add that back in, that one was a forethought of, that's where all the growth is going, is in the North Gate area and that is going to be all Gate City. So some schools were purposely left a little bit lower than others where, if you're like Lewis and Clark, though, there's not new building going on, people might be selling and moving in, but Gate, but that Gate City area is the new growth.
And if you.
Well, we thought it was going to be the new growth five years ago and and that didn't really.
And based on the information we received, that's what, you know, they they said that area up there in the Gate City. Area, but then also if you put that back in Gate City, now you bring Saringa, you you pull them, it's that domino effect, right? So now you're pulling those owners out of Saringa, now we're back to where we're at with Saringa with really low capacity size at Saringa, which we're currently at right now and we tried to, that's where it comes that balancing out piece, as soon as you move one of the dominos, then it starts affecting the other ones.
But I guess I will say one thing about that specific little change, is at um, Saringa, um, the average class size is twenty-five point five and at Gate City it's twenty-one point six. Um, and then at Saringa, but the free and reduced lunch number at Saringa is forty-six and at Gate City it's twenty-one. So like, if you consider kind of needs as well as um, the class size, it might be nice to have a little bit smaller in a higher need, in a place where there's a little bit higher of a need. Even, I mean, we know we'll change it in a year, if that growth ever happens, I just doubt it.
I, I mean, I think that's like a board thing, like our job was just to suggest, but I think if you decide we we were going to close this school, I I don't see why you couldn't go back and maybe redraw some boundaries. Like, once you make that decision, like, I don't know why you couldn't.
Yeah, because I guess we can separate the decision in two. Do we just close a school and then we decide? Let's, let's maybe fix a few of these boundaries just, because there are individual needs that, of course, you can't know, we can't know till they're brought to our attention. Then once they're brought to our attention, we can just kind of fix a lit- just little things.
But you're in January now and if we're looking at making any changes, we really need to have this in place by the end of February.
I see that, but I rather.
Prolonging the decision and wanting more information and you could get on with our consultant, our GIS consultant, and you could tweak every boundary, every street.
Which we did.
Every neighborhood, just as you asked this committee to do over the last two and a half months or three months. And I can assure you, they've done their best work.
Yeah, no, I I understand that you've done really good work.
Do that now.
No, 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 I don't want to do that.
Okay.
No, I certainly, no, that is not at all. I'm talking about tiny little things based on new information, based on specific things, not going back to the drawing board.
Would say it's one in the same.
So, oh, Jim, did you?
I was just going to say, I'm I'm sure they've done, I I can't even imagine what they've gone through to get where they've gotten and, you know, every, looking at every student and every neighborhood and every house and and I I appreciate the hours that they probably put into this and and, you know, over and over and over in their mind of what would be the best thing to do and, you know, I think, I think we have some, some good proposals and we just need to go forward with it.
Mm-hmm, so I guess really, are you, is everybody, I I guess what I would kind of like to talk a little bit about is just the the difference between Washington and Tendoy because really, all these other things are are very small, a little bit off track details.
Okay.
Um, did you want to say something?
Well, I've got a question, so how many full-time employees are we, are we hoping to reduce by? To maintain fiscal responsibility?
Total, district-wide?
Yeah.
We talked about, we said twenty, am I, am I right, Dr. Howell? I I don't, we haven't, we haven't come up with a, I I think we're we're pretty early on in this stage and haven't come up with a number, so I don't want to speak.
Realistically, Ms. Knuf, I would say we're looking at thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
And I think we can do it in chunks, we can do it a little at a time, but if we don't do something, then we, and we do just a little, we exacerbate the problem each and every year that you postpone.
Yeah, you're just kicking the can down the road if you don't address it.
You know, if you say, I'm going to supplement the salaries with two point three million dollars, at a fund balance of, say, fifteen million, in two years, you've just lost a thirty of fund balance.
Right, and so then, and and, okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And to further elaborate then, your projections here on uh, that we're looking at the closures, you're you're ta- talking about ten full-time employees at the elementary level. That was your projection here, but that's probably going to be a little bit higher?
And that was just teachers, yes, and that was if we closed an elementary, we could take ten out and I redistributed because there's twelve, uh, uh, both of those schools, there's currently twelve teachers at Washington and twelve teachers at Tendoy. And I knew we would need a couple more at Saringa because their numbers increased so much, so I added those into Saringa. We may have to make a few changes like we do every year, just based on numbers. If we have a big kindergarten class that shows up at a school, uh, we may need to make an adjustment. Um, but yes, this was just taking out, knowing that we're probably going to be looking at reductions just based on the estimates that Jonathan had provided and now that we have actual data, uh, those estimates maybe were a little conservative and we may even be looking at a few more elementary positions that we would need to reduce.
And and so Doug, then to clarify, you're saying the total would be thirty-seven and the natural attrition each year is twenty-seven or?
Y- yes, it used to be upwards of ten percent, so we would see anywhere probably closer to fifty to fifty-five positions uh, year to over year, but um, in the last four years, I would say, um, we've not seen that. And it's been closer to about six percent turnover, five to six.
So how many is that?
So I don't even think it's possible le- because, unless we got into a RIF situation, a reduction in force.
Right.
And so we would do our absolute best to look at positions throughout the district, how we can realign, redistribute with nutri- uh, attrition, excuse me, not nutrition and um, be able to do that incrementally over, you know, in a phased approach over three to four years, rather than say, we're just going after thirty-seven positions, that's not our goal, that is not our goal.
So what what about the administration and you got, I mean, you've got, you know, you have principals and secretaries and and librarian and then your custodial people?
Administratively, we're over by two right now, uh, classified, I don't recall the number, but it's probably somewhere, Brenda, do you have that number, will you come up?
Yeah.
Brenda, please, come up.
So we, we've been looking at those numbers and um, once we had the new facts that we just got with that, with those numbers, we're looking at, and our pupil personnel services were over by about twelve and who tho- those people are, if we're funded by the state at fifty-four, fifty-five is how many we have and I think we're funded at about forty-three. I have the exact sheet on my desk, I should go grab it, but that I'm looking at, but that's twelve, what those people, who those people are, are um, counselors, um, SLPs, audiologists, you know, tho- those type of positions, those are what pupil personnel, nurse, those types of things, so we're looking at, I I can't even begin to tell you the amount of options even just brainstorming it, you know, all hours trying to think as we look at, I I can't commend Janelle Harris enough with what she's done with Medicaid and being able to, you know, transfer some of those, she pays for some of our teachers out of that funding as well. And so, you know, we're trying every way we can to make sure that we're offsetting that, but what we're going to really have to look at when we look at those twenty positions is we need it to be, like I was saying before, a systems approach, we need, I need to be able to look at people's certifications and see where they teach, you know, if you're in a middle school, maybe you have a K-eight certificate, you know what I mean? And so maybe we just have to look at that as a whole district, not just as ten positions in elementary or four in middle school or this many in high school. And it gets real difficult, we're looking at classes even in the high schools and what classes and what's their class loads and all of those things, what's their, what are they able to teach? Is there maybe a middle school teacher who has a high school math credential? So we, we're not going to fill that math job, we'll move the middle school teacher, I mean, that's how how intricate we're going to have to make this puzzle. And so it it really is vast, but like Doug said, it is one hundred percent our goal that this is a phased approach, that we don't ever have to go into a situation where we, you know, riff at employees, we want to do it through attrition. And th- th- that's the pros, is that we're a really great district that has a whole lot of teachers that aren't ready to leave and we have that high retention rate, so that that's kind of where we kind of battle that because our numbers of teachers leaving has went down.
Thank you.
I think two, what would offset that, and it's something just for the board to consider, is the only way you could offset that would be to increase the request on a supplemental levy. If you wanted to maintain staffing for a year or two, then that's what you look at because we use that supplemental levy primarily for our staff costs.
But then there's a domino effect, would have to increase SIP because then we're s- we're having these buildings that are aging that need repairs.
And that goes back to Mr. Paul's first comment, you have to look at things operationally and then you have to look at just the general maintenance and upkeep.
Because maintenance is one thing, but renovation is an entirely thing.
Right, right.
And to answer your question earlier, you asked about the why, like Washington versus Tendoy, we originally went with Washington because of that cost, that's why. And then the Washington parents came in and broke our hearts and then, that you feel bad, but that is originally why. It 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 really was like looking at closing down one school and that's why that one got picked. It wasn't like, I mean, there were still advantages of Washington, it's a Southern more school, it's bigger, but there were other things that factored into that.
Because I mean, I I can talk to Jonathan about this later, but the differences between Washington and Tendoy were as big as what I had thought, um, so there's that.
As big or were?
Were not as big, as far as the needed upgrades. So that is something I can talk to him about later to get a little bit more of a detail on the exact amount of needed upgrades, um, one versus the other school, but it isn't as drastic as I originally thought.
And I think dollars aside, but logistics more, um, if Washington was at any point, you know, in the near term, needing to do any of those renovations, I I mean, I'm I'm just a parent, I don't know how the workings of of the district goes, but I would assume that kids would need moved out of the building anyway to do a lot of the foundation or roofing, you know, all those kind of things.
Any of the schools, yes, any of the schools would need to be moved out, yes.
And so here we are, you know, back to square one on where do we put those Washington kids while we're doing renovations?
Right, or where do we put the Tendoy kids, when we do the Tendoy renovations, it's the same. It's really kind of the same when you're doing structural, it would be the same. I mean, yeah, they can't stay in there, but um, as of right now, we actually have room. On the bright side, in a rural district, we wouldn't have the options that we have. So I mean, in a way, we're actually very blessed to have so many options available if we do need to work on a school.
Okay, um, Mr. Watson, I'm just looking at the elementary building capacity, staffing, class size chart. And on that last column there with teachers, that number doesn't change per chart, right? So that is the current number, is that how I'm understanding that?
Correct, a- as you're looking at it, just just remember what I talked about though, it's minus ten teachers, so we really have two hundred and fourteen, so with the Washington closure and Tendoy closure, that's reducing ten teachers in that number, that is not included because I didn't know where those teachers would come out of yet in the balanced enrollment one, so that's why that number's two fourteen. So we're actually at two hundred and fourteen elementary FTE, grade level FTEs total.
So unlike the Washington one, this is saying like, this is how many teachers will be needed at this building?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I need to, thank you.
To get that, a- and that's how we figured out the average class size, is using that number of teachers now. That varies obviously by grade level because it'd look a little different depending on grade, but it gave us a a reasonable number we could look at and see where we were at.
And and every year, unfortunately, I know this makes people really angry, but in order to keep that average class size similar, um, there has to be overload.
Or some or some adjustments to the this teaching staff, depending on the grade.
Yeah, if there's not a whole teacher, then have to overload just, not because there's really not room at the school, but because there isn't enough kids for another teacher at the school.
Correct.
And that's that's hard to get, that's hard to wrap your mind around, but it's, it is the reality, which is also reflected in the state law.
Well, I also think, what I was thinking about to your question about the little neighborhoods too, because we did bring this up the other day about how those parents still have the option to transfer in back into that school because that is a lot now.
Yeah, without busing.
Yes.
Yes, so, yeah. Just, it's just always that balance, like, if you make someone have to drive, then there's always that worry, like, are they just going to go to a charter school? Which is what was reflected back to me in comments, you know, if if I have to drive, then, you know, I'm like, oh, well, okay, well, we do want to consider that. You know, in all of this.
Hey, any addition?
Kids won't have to drive, I mean, we won't have to drive any kids, that they're, everybody will be provided a bus, right? If, I mean, if they want to drive.
If they transfer, I'm just specifically talking about people that want their kids to stay at that school that they are at. Or if there's one that they want.
I mean, depending on where you live, if you're going to drive to a school, you might be driving farther to a charter school, I mean. it's kinda gonna end up being like their choice.
It's true, it's true, I mean, I can't really get overly concerned about any one thing when you're trying to balance everything.
So when you made the comment about the costs of Washington, did you have any actual data that you were looking at for the costs of renovations to Washington versus Tendoy? That's kind of what I've been trying to get to.
So I think...
Maybe that's what you're wanting to say.
Well, in the paper, it had some numbers.
On that twenty-nine facility, right?
Yes.
Jonathan addressed that.
That comparison report.
Yeah, in our last meeting, we took a look at, you know, red line items that needed to be taken care of immediately. Jonathan presented that, and then yellow items that could be delayed a little bit. And so he gave us a comprehensive report on the cost of those, of each of those items, and their priority, correct?
Yeah, and I think, I think the way it looked is in the future, in the near future, it was quite a bit difference between the two of them, but in, I think it was a fifteen-year period, they came out about the same.
Right, but over a three-year period, the roof and the basement and another factor at Washington need to be taken care of very quickly.
Right, but then, but you said, but Jim, you said over a fifteen-year period, it was roughly the same.
They came out pretty close.
And then Washington has a larger capacity to house.
It does, but then it doesn't have ADA either, so.
Right.
And that was another consideration.
That wasn't in the proposal of the money that was there.
But you also have to think, if you're looking at the future of declining, like are you gonna put all this money into a school that you might, you know what I mean?
Well, I know, if you look at, compared to Pocatello High School, I mean, it's twenty-two years older than Washington, and, you know, and it's been taken well care of, and they fixed it up and patched it, and it's made it a really nice school. And, you know, and it's still standing and doing well.
But I would say that if that is a decision to keep Washington and work on it, like these guys back here were very motivated, and, I mean, really knowledgeable and ready to like get going and get some fundraising and get some stuff going. So if that is an option, there's people that in the community I think that are willing to help with that.
And, and you know, I have one other option, I don't wanna just like drop a big, you know, drop something on everybody, but I do want to consider what the people, what our taxpayers want, what our, what our parents want. And if it is what they want, I, nobody wants to close a school, I understand that. But if, if Washington, it is historic, if there is a desire because of the historic nature of the building and a lot of other things, there's a little bit of an edge there, that they have that history and that, I mean, that, you know, just that motivation, like you said, the motivation. Is it something that we could ask the taxpayers, you know? This is a historic building, are you willing to not, not a, not do a a really big thing, but a small bond? Just to preserve that historical building? But with the caveat that anything, any other school that's closed, one hundred percent of that money first goes to pay for it. So we're being fiscally responsible, we're not just adding money to our budget, we're just only asking for that additional money that is needed. I don't know if that...
Well, we did, we did talk about asking the public for money, the concern was, they talked about the Highland Century one, where that's affecting two-thirds of the community, we still couldn't get that. When you're talking about raising money for one school, and I'm not saying that these guys couldn't do it, because they seem very motivated, they, but to try to get a hundred percent of the community when you have one school, that we did talk about.
Well, it would be a dramatically different amount. And it would, and I think we learned our lesson, it needs to be one thing. Only one thing. And we can't add something else to it, because then it, it really kind of confuses the focus. And it confuses people to say, well, what are you exactly asking for? Something you need, or is it something that you could do over time? Like what, what is, it really, it's hard, it's hard. From the feedback that we got, that's a reflection of the feedback that we got after the fact.
And we do have, that just leads me into the next portion, we do have the public hearing that will be next Wednesday, from seven to nine at Pocatello High School, so the community will have some, have an opportunity to provide additional input at that meeting as well.
So we might have more ideas of options that the community is willing to do, from that meeting possibly. But I just wanna really, I guess, draw the public's attention to the fact that there has been so much input and so much time and so much effort with this, the committee is parents and teachers. And it's very much, we really, all of the board members wanted a very representative committee that wasn't, nobody was appointed. Nobody was appointed. And it's all volunteers, people that are engaged, they have, they have a reason to really be motivated to be, to want to be on that committee, nobody was appointed. And to just really, you know, with this public hearing coming up, I think that focus needs to be there, that I feel like we have listened. I've read a lot of articles and a lot of emails, and I just, I'm like, oh, I agree with this, I agree with this, I agree with this. I really, it's hard, because you, everybody, we want everybody to be happy and...
Well, I agree, and I wanna say how much we appreciate our, the committee and all the time that they put into it. And I know that no matter what we decide, I think AJ brought it up, that Mr. Watson brought it up, that, you know, there's, it's not gonna be happy for somebody. I mean, we're not gonna be able to please everybody. And I hope that whatever we decide, you know, I can see advantages to both schools, closing one or closing the other, or keeping them open. And it's gonna be a really tough decision what to do there. But I hope that whatever we decide, that everybody will support us in that decision. Because I know that if we have good support, and if you're positive with your kids, that no matter what happens to them, if they have to go to a different school or whatever, that your attitude as a parent will make a lot of difference in the kid's attitude when they go there. And, you know, we can look at it as a great experience, a new experience, getting new friends, new teachers, new building, new playgrounds, new opportunities to go wherever and do things, and an opportunity to learn and grow. And kids will learn and grow from it, they're resilient and they're strong, and they will, they will adapt. I'm almost positive they will, if we, if we support them and help them to see that it's a positive thing and can be.
I don't believe it's the kids are gonna have, that are gonna suffer, I really don't. I think that the kids are gonna have a really good teacher. The teachers are gonna be the same, no matter what happens, it's the same teachers. And the same effort, and the same, you know, it's the same. As far as that goes, the teachers are the same. But I do also wanna echo what Jim said, you know, that the parents that have spoken and have written letters and articles in the journals, to me, in my opinion, that's our most valuable resource in this community. Those are the people that care, and they understand, because it's their kids, and it's their community. And I just think that's our most valuable resources, the people of this community, not only just the teachers, all of our community.
I think that's where you guys have the really hard job, and we were very happy we didn't have to make this decision, because you have to balance the sentimentality and the attachment to things with the fiscal side. And I think sometimes that's what's getting lost in the community, it's hard for them to see the fiscal part and think that it's all about money, because everybody gets attached, but that's why it's your job.
I have, I don't know of anybody that likes property taxes. So when you're connecting it, then there's, there's not a connection.
Yep.
There's a disconnect there. Like we don't want property taxes, but we want all the schools. I, I do too, I agree with both of those.
Okay.
I just wondered if there was anything you guys discussed that we haven't asked about yet that you feel like we need to know that you wanna share with us?
They have a lot of notes, they didn't realize they were talking last night after we finished up, they, like, we didn't realize it was gonna be this involved when we signed up for this opportunity.
Amen to that.
That's what they told us too.
Oh, I can one hundred percent agree with that.
Meetings once a month.
I had no idea.
One, I think the newest piece of information that we got last night, I think all the other information that we got was kind of just either restructured or a little bit different, or kind of, you know, but this was, I think, the probably, something that we hadn't seen before, was the bus information between Tendoy and Washington. And I don't know if this is for or against or swayed, I think it was just interesting to see was, I don't know if this was attached to any of the notes or anything, but it looked like at Tendoy Elementary, twenty-four percent of the learners were bused, seventy-six percent were self-transport or walked. Which I think we thought was surprising for Tendoy. And then Washington Elementary was sixty percent bused, forty percent self-transport and walking, which we equally thought was as surprising.
One, one thing that I, one thought I had with that is that we have to legally provide that transportation, whether or not they get on the bus or not.
Exactly.
And so the bus routes, I don't think could change, they would have to remain the same, is that right? I mean, they would have to, even if they say they're walking.
One or the other, it's either, it's gonna increase busing on both of them, if you close one, right?
Oh, both of them, right.
It would have, it would have an impact on transportation, for sure, either way.
Right, but, but like when I take my kids to school, the bus still comes. I guess that's really my point. The bus is never canceled. Because my, you know, even though I don't use it, the bus is still coming. Because that's where the kids are, and that's what...
Well, I think we were more shocked because we were, they presented as like all of these kids were walking, and it was a lot less than we had thought were walking. But also we did, we did consult transportation on a lot of these boundaries, especially with like the Johnny Creek area and those, and some of that decision was made because it was, one of them, was it Johnny Creek? That was split at one point, and the bus said, we can't go up there twice. So that's why one of the decisions was made on that boundary, was had to do with transportation.
I remember that for high school. I don't know if it's the same for elementary or not.
It was.
It's the same.
Is it the same?
Same concern.
But overall, it's not a lot of numbers, is that right? But it is a difference.
I don't think there's anything really that I'm looking at that I would say was different, I just, they, everybody at the committee yesterday just wanted us to reiterate that when we looked at everything, we considered a lot of things, like free and reduced lunch, classroom size, capacity, growth and growth areas. A lot of it was talked about what's gonna happen in the future, and what are the trends. So they just wanted us to reiterate that we took all those things into consideration when we did all three proposals.
If there's no other, oh, sorry.
So, no, thank you, but Sue is also, she has some secondary information that she would like to see if there's questions or additional follow-up. So she, she didn't wanna come up here with all of us, and said she would wait till the end, so we'll have Sue come up for the secondary.
I just...
Didn't know if you had any questions about the proposals from secondary.
I did.
Okay.
First of all, I've got map od nauseam for all of this, I'm trying to keep them all straight. But the one question I did want to have is when you looked similarly to what the elementaries did, where they did the, they could tell which student was in which, what grade level did you do yours on?
We started with eight through eleven, because that would be the eighth grade coming up.
So in my mind, an eighth grader already has in mind where they're going. Whereas five, six, seven may not.
So I said, so we started with eighth grade, then we went to six, seven, eight.
Or six, seven, I mean, yeah.
Yep, we moved to six, seven, eight coming up.
Because that, you know, if I'm looking at, I wanna know where those sixth and seventh graders are, because they are gonna be my potential high schooler.
Yep.
And wanna make sure that that's what's being looked at. So are these maps based on which grade?
They're based on eight, nine, ten, eleven, but they're similar to six, seven, eight, nine.
Really?
When you did both ages, you found that it was similar.
Is there any chance we can see those maps?
We can try.
I mean, I just think there's a, there's a heck of a lot more information seeing where a sixth, seventh, eighth grader is versus eight or ten.
Yep.
Although in three years, we're gonna be probably talking about boundaries at least a little bit again.
Yep.
And that's why in three years, I don't know that we can make a decision for three years down the road.
Because in three years, look at three years ago, and it was, for one thing, our high school isn't burned down, and so
there was a lot of differences.
So ultimately, so I'm seeing here, you sent the this table with the different options.
Yes.
The option C, and so tell me what option C is, so you're saying...
So the committee is recommending option A, which is strictly...
Six and seven.
Yep, it's, it's location six and seven, and it would be moving the east side of Old Bannock Highway to go to Century High School.
And you did that based on the bus routes?
Based on the bus routes, yep. And they would get, over the next few years, ninety-five more students from Pocatello High School to going to Century.
So where does that boundaries right now?
The boundary right now, all of that goes to Pocatello High School.
All of it does?
Mm-hmm.
All the way to the country club?
Yes.
Okay.
And then what about, we talked about something with zone eleven.
So option C is a whole bunch of moves. So that is south of Grant and west of, of I-15. All of that goes to Century High School.
Is that zone one, or?
Nope.
What number is that?
That's zone six, seven, and eleven.
Oh, okay.
So that includes the...
All of Johnny Creek.
All of Johnny Creek?
All of Country Club, all of six and seven that we had talked about for option A.
So you're talking where Grant hits South Bannock Highway?
Correct.
From there.
All of that goes to Century, the whole thing. Okay?
How many kids, how many kids does that affect?
Yeah, I didn't bring my notes with me.
On here, you say six hundred and twenty-two, but the other thing I'm also noticing is not any of these involve any real changes to Highland, and was that just a decision that we just weren't gonna look at moving?
That was a question I asked you guys two months ago, and said, leave Highland alone at the moment.
There's so much change going on.
There's so much change going on in Highland right now, we, yeah. So pulling the whole south end of town into Century pulls too many kids from Pocatello High School, and would literally flip the problem. So we had to pull some students from north to go into Pocatello High School. That is zone...
Nine.
Nine, thank you. Pulling those out of Highland though, we need to get Highland back up to the numbers that need to be, so we pulled some from Century in the north of Centuries, in that central, center of town. That's zone one, or zone, excuse me, eight, nine, and one, eight, ten, and one. And that pulls that bunch back over to Highland. So essentially what we did was take the south of town, put it into Century, move Pocatello up closer to the north, and put Highlands back into the center.
And that still keeps Highland at six, and the others at five?
Correct.
So I think...
But it also affects six hundred and twenty-two families to do that kind of a change right now. And then Highland will be rebuilt in two years, and do we wanna look at doing this?
It will have two thousand capacity, and so that is something that has to be considered as well.
But the growth is also north of town.
And we don't know if, yeah, where the growth will for sure be.
It's, it's scheduled, and what's, what we've been told from the city is that's where the plots have been.
The north, but is it northwest or northeast?
Both.
Okay, because we thought it was gonna be northeast. And it ended up being quite a bit more northwest. And so we don't know for sure if it'll be northeast or northwest.
So looking at the chart here, we have options from December eleven and December four.
Correct.
And then the top are the options we're discussing tonight?
No, so the top, the one, two, three, four.
Yeah.
Those were options that the, that the committee came said, you know what, let's start somewhere. So, we started somewhere and we talked about those options, the pros, the cons, the bads, the goods, and they said, you know what, we need to refine this. And we went from those four to option A. And that was one option, and then we talked a little bit more and they said, we really should propose at least option C, because the discussion was, south of town should go to Century High School. Like, well, if south of town goes to Century High School, then we need to make sure that we get the rest of it redistributed so that Pocatello doesn't get gutted. If you just move south, Grant, south to, to Century High School, it literally flip flops the problem.
Yeah, so option A was just zones six and seven.
Correct.
Option B was six and seven and one.
Correct. And the discussion on that was, those are students north of, they're in the northern section of the town. And they didn't wanna bring any more northern students down to Century High School. They wanted to see if we could get southern students into, into Century High School.
Okay.
So, that's why option B was just next.
Okay, and so now, and then we've got option C, which is six, seven, and eleven, uh, which is the Johnny Creek area, right? And, uh?
And north Chubak and the middle of town.
See, I just think, we are, you know, growth is not gonna happen south of town, and if we can just get south of town to Century, just done. I, you know, I mean, yeah, just like with elementary, we're gonna have to redo things in the future, but then Century is, I mean, that's why I moved there, cause I wanted my kids to go to Century and a couple of years ago, we got flipped to Poki. I mean, it, I, I think Century is the place that needs shoring up again and, um, yeah, I guess I'm.
That's what I said.
I'm leaning towards.
This was.
Uphaveal is gonna be the name of the next year's game, I guess, but I, I just feel like, I mean.
And, and either way works.
Century, we'll always be trying to, you know, readjust, whereas if we just take care of south of town and leave south of town with Century, people are happy there.
You can't pull, well.
No, I get that.
You can, you can, but pulling all of south of town and not doing anything else.
Oh, I know that, I, I completely accept that.
You, you, you're gonna gut Pocatello High School.
Well, unless you make those adjustments.
Exactly, exactly, yes.
Then eventually, that, those, those northern parts of Pocatello High School will probably get more kids coming. I mean, they probably have the elementary kids there, that'll be high school kids.
I, I mean, I'm not minimizing again that this is.
There are two high schools south of, I mean, in the south, really. Poki and Century, that is kind of, they're both.
Poki's in the center.
So, I've got a question.
I mean, we've got.
So, center can go either way.
Is going to Century, I mean, there's just, in my mind, we've got things going to Century that just don't make any sense, whereas the Johnny Creek, that, I mean.
But.
Yeah, but specifically now, originally, it was six and seven, so right over South Valley Road and, and then next to the tracks. And so, uh, now option, uh, option, uh, C includes eleven, wasn't there a transportation question?
So, we can't do half of eleven. So, we had talked, one, one of the options we talked about at the very beginning was cutting, uh, the whole south of town in horizontally this way. And transportation came and said, oh, please don't do that, we can't run buses if, if we have this half going to Poki and this half going to Century. This road is one road, once they start it, they, there's no place to turn around. So, they'd have to run two sets of transportation. So, they said, please, if you, if you're going to split it, split it north and south. And that's why we came up with six and seven. And then Johnny Creek is all one road, all one route, and this is all a second.
Oh, okay, so, so adding eleven would not be a transportation problem.
As long as we added both. Is, if you're adding six, seven.
Seven and eleven.
Six and seven, or eleven, or both.
Or both. Great, wonderful, thank you, I understand now, all right. Okay, I understand, thank you.
Clear as mud.
Yeah, well, no, no, I actually understand it now, thank you.
I am having a hard time seeing which map is option C.
Option C is actually two maps.
Okay.
It's, um. Yep, it says, um, north high school boundaries and, I wanna say north and south. If you're looking.
I'm on November nineteenth, but I'm not hiding it. I'm not sure one and two is in today's, I see three, oh, no, there it is.
One is very, very small.
Yeah, there it is, okay.
It's on the same page as the north Chubak.
As three and five, yeah.
So, that's an option C.
Correct.
One and, and eight as well?
Yes.
So, option A is the first map.
I, I don't have the maps in front of me, so I'm not.
It's, the only map that has a label that I can see is op, is the first map and it says option A. The second map is just draft, but no option. And the third and the fourth map don't say an, an option on that.
I'm looking to see.
So, yeah, option A was just that little chunk happening.
Right, and that's why I'm asking, what are the second, third, and fourth and fifth maps?
I'm gonna take away.
The second, the option one, two, and three, and four?
There are five maps that I see, there are four maps.
Let me see where you're looking, cause I'm not even sure where you're at.
Second, go to the second map. So, that's, that's just option A, so this one, so there's one, and there's two, and three, and four, is that a three?
So, maps three and four are option three.
One and two is where some changes would have to happen. Getting kids into Poki. And then this is putting this section into Century. And then a chunk of the Chubak.
So, you're saying that options, um, the maps five, four, and three are option C?
Okay, I'm, I'm finally on the same page you guys are on. Okay.
Is that what you're saying?
So.
So, where are we looking?
So, one option.
Option A is page two on your maps.
Right.
Right.
Okay, option C is actually, um, page four.
Oh.
That's the red.
That's all of it.
So, it's not page three?
No, page three is nothing right now.
Okay.
Okay?
So, option C is four and five?
Is part, page, page four.
Has the one in it, which is.
No, it does not.
Option C has one.
Ooh, does it?
Option one, you have a, a.
Option one is the only one contained in one map, is that right?
I don't even know.
It's the least amount of upheaval, least amount of changes.
You don't even have option one on your maps.
I have it, it says option A.
Oh, there it is, okay, that is on page three.
Mine is two, is that, it says option A.
Option A is page two.
Page two.
That's, that's option A.
That's all, all of it, yeah.
Option C is on page three.
So, where are we looking here?
Just moving that number one.
You're looking at the number one on page three. It's on the left side, about halfway up, where the blue meets the turquoise.
And so, that's moving someone from Century into Poki.
That's moving somebody in Poki into Century.
Into Century, okay, other direction.
Yep.
Okay, so this yellow dot, is that where Pocatello High School is?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay? Then, page four is the whole south of town.
Eleven, six, and seven, so nine and eight.
Are on page five.
So, that's the piece, I don't see an eight.
Scroll up a little bit, it's at the very bottom of that page.
Oh, 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 down there in the corner.
And it's all where it says eight and ten.
Yep.
Eight is all of that.
And that would go into Poki.
That would go to.
Century. Highland. I know you.
Highland, it would go to Highland.
And so, the numbers between each school, between A and C?
Yes.
Can you just tell me?
Yes. For A, ninety-five students would go from Pocatello High School to Century High School.
Okay.
For C, eighty-two students would go from Pocatello High School to Century. And three students would go from Highland to Century, that would be the breakdown of it.
Because of.
And then what else would happen?
Zone eight.
Finish, can you finish that?
Yep. So, um, hang on, I gotta get to my little sheet, cause.
Cause I, it's very hard to see that.
Eighty-five eighth graders, are they eighty-five, what grade?
Those are eighth, those are eighty-five students that, from eight through eleven, that would go to, that could go to.
Right, see, that's what I don't.
So, it's gonna take three years to get eighty-five students there. It's gonna take three years to get anybody to move all of it.
Anywhere, because we're, we're, I would want them to be able to remain at the high school.
They stay where they're at.
They have, if they want to.
But, but if you showed the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in those areas, they're potential larger numbers.
That completely.
But it's still three years before you're gonna get to there.
Right, right, I, I, I recognize that, but that's, if that's what we're trying to get to a point where we're looking at.
The numbers were very, very, very similar.
But you would like to see them.
But, and I can have our GIS poll.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yep. So.
I think that's where it's gonna show.
So.
A three-year projection of more, I think that would give the school or parents or coaches or whomever that they, they can see that, yes, there is influx happening over three years, it's not just, cause those that are there now, like you say, those eighty-five, they're not gonna move.
Sixty.
Sixty?
Well, out of, out of eighty-five, a fourth of them.
Yeah.
Are gonna be eighth graders.
But they're not, more than likely.
Don't know.
We don't know.
Don't know.
Highly unlikely.
Well.
That they're gonna make that move.
And a reminder, any of these moves we do, creating space in one school and filling another or creating space in another school, you've left open transfer space. So.
So.
Pretty much, if you wanna go to a school, there's space.
So, um, can you finish what you were saying on options?
So, option C.
I, you left off at eighty-five students from.
Eighty, so eighty, eighty-five students is what it's gonna, tech, it was gonna affect, the, the final move is eighty-five students.
On option C?
On option C. But what it does is, zone eleven, there's a hundred and thirty-seven kids that would go from Poki to Century. In zone six and seven, there's ninety-five students that would go from Poki to Century. In zone nine, there's a hundred and eighty-one students that would leave Highland and go to Poki. In zone one, thirty-one students would leave Poki and go to Century. And in zone eight, a hundred and seventy-eight students would leave Century and go to Highland.
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
And that's doing a lot of changes.
Six hundred and twenty-two kids.
When in a few years, we're gonna have a new high school finished. That seems a little bit.
But again, it gets all of south town on the west side of I fifteen, going to Century High School.
It just feels like to make that big of a change in the middle of a rebuilding of a burnt school feels so.
That's why you guys have this.
Feels just so strange.
That's why you have the decision to make.
Well, I think, uh, the point Heather made was that we'd like to get this taken, the southern part of town taken care of, correct?
Yeah, maybe just don't, you won't have to worry about them.
Right.
Yeah.
It's gonna have to happen.
Until three years.
But then, but Centuries area is not gonna go to Highland, we're not gonna take people from south of town to go to Highland.
It's, it's gonna be a different board, so. That'll be their decision.
The geography of where these schools.
I mean, we didn't think that would happen before, and it did. So, it'll be a different board, so I guess it's not really.
Well, personally, I mean, I, when it was only six and seven, I was wondering about Johnny Creek, but adding eleven in there seems, you know, makes a lot of sense.
But as I said, you have to do a whole lot of the shifts. Jimmy, you had a question?
I was just saying that, no matter what you do here, Highland's really not gonna be affected that greatly.
We tried not to touch it at this time.
See, it is, a hundred and eighty-one students from Highland will be going to Poki.
But then you're gonna have kids that are, that go to Century, gonna be going to Highland.
Well, I'm not saying the numbers, I'm not saying the numbers are a difference, I'm saying the amount of students it's affecting is different.
Ninety-five students for option A and six hundred and twenty-two for option C.
Right. In a traumatic situation.
Solving the problem that we started from. Well, and again, I, I don't know that I can, until I can see what six, seven, eight grade levels are and what, I don't know, cause I don't think in either case, it's making any difference whatsoever. I mean, why even do this if it's a matter of ninety-five kids or eighty-five kids?
It balances Poki and Century, Poki and Century are, right now are two hundred kids apart. So, if you would like them to be balanced.
The whole point was.
But I, right, but I think it's just a, a drop in the bucket, it's not making the, um.
But I can't create more kids.
Sure. Right, but we can make the kids that are in their areas. I don't know, it just seems, it seems like it, it can be balanced geographically and ensure, well, again, I, it's hard for me to say when, when we're looking at these numbers of eighth graders, I mean, cause that to me doesn't, that doesn't tell me what the future is.
So, one other point I guess I would make is on option C, out of those one hundred and seventy-eight kids that are currently going to Century, that's assuming that all of them are going to want to transfer to Highland right now. Because they will have the option to stay there, and like you said, there is going to be space in schools, and so if they want to stay, they want to transfer, this could be creating an even larger problem because of the open boundary laws.
That, and that's the same with all of it. And my assumption was that the students who are at those schools right now could stay at those schools right now. So, over the next three years, it's the eighth graders coming up, this is gonna affect.
We're, we're strictly really talking about eighth graders right now.
So, would those students have to apply for a transfer every year or their grandfather?
Their grandfather did.
Okay.
Would they have a sibling that's coming up?
That's part of the transfer rules then.
They'll, they'll have priority.
That's according to what we decide as a board.
There's board policy for transfers and who gets priority and who doesn't and when, so.
And that, and that could stay the same.
It can stay the same or you guys can choose to change.
Or it could change, whatever.
So, Mrs. Pettit, about, I feel like we've talked a lot about the changing numbers over the years. Would you predict that we're gonna obviously be back here in two years, but then also again, in two or three years, and again?
I hope not. I can see something happening in a couple of years when Highland opens with more capacity.
Okay.
Um, whether it's boundary change or whether it's, um, change board policy for capacity. I can see that happening.
That would also have to be changed state law.
And we also need to look at where growth has happened. Um, if growth continues north of town and my magic ball is, is broken, but I mean, if it continues north of town, are we going to have to look at pushing Centuries' boundaries even farther, a little north, to make sure that they're staying balanced with the other schools? Or, for some reason, somebody says, hey, I'm gonna build south of town and.
And make a development south of town.
We, we, we just don't, I mean, we, we do our best guessing with the information we have.
Okay, thank you.
Cause I guess if water became available there in the Century boundaries, that could mean a development. But as far as what I know is, that it's because of the water option isn't.
Right now?
Right now, but that can change.
Yep. So, I'm, I said, I, the committee recommended A, they asked if I make sure that we gave you option C so that you knew it was there? And it's there, so.
No, thank you. I, I think option C is very interesting, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So, maybe just at the next meeting, though, we'll look at those other numbers.
I will see if I can get some numbers for you.
See how close they are.
So, we need to make sure that we, how do we get the information to the public of A and C? I mean.
As far as.
For the public forum.
For the public forum, so. We have a proposal for you for, for Tuesday next week that gives you option A, option C. There will be maps attached to it, I've asked our GIS, right now, the option C is in two maps. Um, I've asked our, our GIS if she can give us one map with all of it, and we've actually asked to have them in poster size. So, for our public.
So, when will that be written, like, say, to the journal, so that they, that information will be out there?
I have to get it, I have to get it from her first.
And so, do you, you don't have a date? Cause there are, they're available right now, it's just they're not in that format.
They're not clean right now.
Okay. Um, are there? Um, are there any other questions or comments? Um, we have one person that has signed up for a public comment, um, Ruth.
Yeah, thank you.
Boukart. Did I say your name right? Butcher?
Butcher.
Butcher.
Thank you, uh, for letting me come up and speak today. And thank you for all of the, the time and work that the committee has done. Um, so, so much work, more than they thought. Um, and thank you for, uh, making a comment about, um. Hopefully ma, keeping, um, as, um, little disruption as possible. Uh, I live on Delmar Street in the Saratoga Street to Calico Circle area, west of Olympus that currently goes to Gate City and Franklin. Um, if you look at the map that we've been, the maps that we've been talking about of the proposed school boundaries, um, we are the odd sharp shape to the north. Uh, on the east side of the freeway. Uh, in the last board meeting that I attended in November. The question was asked by a member of the board, why our area was oddly on the other side of the freeway to the schools the children would be attending. But the question wasn't really answered. Uh, I would like to address that now. Our neighborhood attends Gate City Elementary School and Franklin Middle School. All proposed school boundary changes would move us from our schools. To elementary schools across the freeway and a middle school. That would split our community. The idea that there needs to be an adjustment, um, at all has, um, is still a little muddy for me. Um, as the elementary schools are not at capacity. Um, and the area that we would be moved from, um. The number of students that would be moved from Gate City and, and from, uh, to a different school and then from Edahow to Gate City are approximately the same. So it doesn't, um, those numbers are a little confusing. Uh, su- such a change would be disruptive to our children's education. My five children, who attend both Gate City and Franklin. Have told me that they do not wanna move schools. They have repeatedly voiced this concern to me, um, about the potential change. The proposed change to move our children across the freeway concerns me, uh, as they would not be able to safely walk home in the case of an emergency. Uh, when looking at a map, our neighborhood looks like it would have easy access to Seringa, but in reality, this is not the case. There are several large intersections, as well as freeway on and off ramps in addition to many businesses on busy streets. Then once past all of those dangers, there is not a sidewalk on Highline, which is the only route to our neighborhood. Um, this is perilous to say the least. Um, we weighed carefully what school our children would attend when deciding where to live, and it is disappointing that our neighborhood. Would no longer be in the boundary of the school that we chose, um, as if we have very little say in our children's education. This is the case for many parents in our neighborhood. The committee's first goal, um, was to address the reduced enrollment, but it seems that the redistribution of students could further cause parents to remove their students. Uh, from the district by sending them to charter schools or homeschooling. Some parents in our neighborhood have put together a petition entitled petition against proposed changes to Pocatello School District twenty-five. School boundaries particularly regarding Saratoga Street to Calico Circle neighborhood being moved out of their current school boundaries. We have gained, or we have gotten, uh, fifty-three names signed on this petition and they're on these pages. Uh, by parents of students as well as concerned citizens in our area. These names help illustrate. That the displacement of our students from their schools would be disappointing to our whole community. We will continue to collect sig- signatures, um, for this petition and, uh, will hopefully present them at the public forum.
Thank you.
Uh, oh, I'm almost done.
Oh, okay.
Uh, several parents voiced their with, uh, their wish that they could be here, um, to agree with this and, and, and speak, but they were not able to. Um, although this is a very complicated issue, I wanna advocate for the well-being of our neighborhood. Please reconsider the proposed change to the boundary of Gate City Elementary and Franklin Middle School that would exclude our children. From, uh, the schools that they love. Um, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Um, are there any other comments or questions? If not, um. That concludes this meeting.